Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you today here to the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, April fourth, twenty twenty-three. Everybody got over the April Fool holiday, is that correct? With me today, I have Bill Twain. Oh, no, that's April Fool. Don Schrankert, Ned Flegel, and myself, Mike Stein, are your county supervisors. We have Lisa and Bjorn from the Auditor's Office. Luann, our executive assistant, is in the background, um, taking care of us. And we have security here today. I don't know what we're expecting. So, good morning, everyone, and welcome. And our first on our agenda today is the public hearing on proposed bid material, bid documents. So I would hope it's a public hearing. And if we could have a brief explanation from our county engineer, Mr. Todd Keeney.
Okay. So we got two sets of materials letting documents, one for the steel piling, the steel beam, for the bridge work we're gonna be doing. And then the other one is for the plank and post material for those bridges. It's two different types of contractor supply that material. So there's two different bidding documents sets. So it's just, uh, the notice bidder, bidders or advertisements. So there's instruction to bidders about their, the bonds that are required, uh, the bidding proposal, and then, uh, basically, uh, the form of contract which mirrors the proposals.
Okay. Any questions or concerns from the public or anyone here regarding the, uh, bidding documents or proposed process? We have nobody with us online today?
I guess.
Okay, so anybody present have any comments or questions or concerns regarding the bidding process? I'm here. And now, motion to close the public hearing. Second, I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay. And now we are joined by the Mr. Todd Keeney for county business, our county engineer.
Have to approve the material at all? That's it? Do I actually approve it, approve that at all? So when you close the public hearing, but have you approved?
So it's a motion to approve the bidding documents.
Okay, so that's next on our agenda, yes. So, any other additions or comments on that? None? I would ask for a proposed, uh, action on, uh, the bridge building bidding document.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed grid material bidding documents as presented.
Second, do we have final numbers?
They're, they're just going down.
They're just going down.
Yeah, so we'll get bids in. But yeah, we have a cost estimate for it, yeah.
This, this is for them to go up.
Yeah.
Did you, I'm sorry, did you say that? I'm sorry. I have a motion and a second to approve, approve the proposed bid material bidding documents as presented. All of the favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay. Motion carried.
Okay, so next, uh, got a few entrance permits here. Um, some of you can do these individually, but, uh, so the first one, uh, I guess there, there's, uh, all part of this, the subdivision TNT development of, uh, Seating Ridge. There, there are all three. It's Class C residential. They're all issued to, to a single person, but obviously they're already selling lots. But there's lots one, lots two and three are one permit, and two hundred and sixty-eight street is on another permit. Uh, there, the, the one on, for lots two and three is a shared in lot one, is in a forty mile an hour speed limit zone. So the site distance doesn't meet at fifty-five, but it's fine for the speed limit they're supposed to at. So for those two, on lot, for the driveway for lot one, I would recommend approval. And the same thing for lots two and three. Well, anyway.
Uh, I guess, Todd, this goes along, we, we approved the preliminary design of that subdivision last week, if I remember correctly. Was it last week? Yeah. Time's like, right, but, um, anyway, so does this go along with the preliminary? Yes, has this done, and then he, we have to approve the, the final, correct?
Final, yeah, so these, you've, just like you said, you approved the preliminary, you're gonna, if, you're gonna approve the file, I believe, next week. Thank you, sir. And these are the entrance permits, uh, that the board would approve, and then be part of that, that final permit to show where the entrances are gonna be.
Yeah, I just wanted to see the process because we actually have to see approval, where he's gonna enter, if, if it's gonna be the final five, I suppose you call it. And those entrances were on the preliminary. I mean, we seen them, where they went in, and the cul-de-sac, and then the one was separate, yeah. So, any questions or concerns for them? Entrants?
So we have to approve these individual, the, you know?
I'll make a motion to approve lot one entrance permit.
Well, second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the entrance permit, or as presented for lot one, uh, TNT development as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay. Carry.
Not make a motion to approve lots two and three entrance permit.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the entrance permits TNT development for lots two and three as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay. Carry.
So, item A, what's the subdivision street on west side of Seating Ridge Road? That's his two hundred and sixty-eight street, but again, that's this one that we still need to approve. That's this one. We did, we actually did B and C, now A is this one.
So, that is also in the forty-five?
This one is not, but it has five hundred and five hundred.
It's okay, okay.
So move.
I will second that.
A motion and second to approve the entrance permit to TNT, um, as presented. Um, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay. Motion carried.
Okay, so last one, uh, here is a Class D field entrance. Uh, one hundred and sixteen street. It is a dead-end road. The, the site distance is only two hundred and fifty feet. There is already a hit driveway sign there because there's a driveway to another piece of property. Uh, so the driveways are right at the end of the road, so, uh, I would just recommend approval, even though there's limited site distance, but this, you're basically, you're slowing down anyway because the road ends. So there's no posted speed limit, but you couldn't continue past the driveways at, uh, at a normal rate of speed, otherwise you'd run off the end of the road, basically.
So there's no traffic coming from one direction?
Yes.
Any other questions?
Make that motion.
So move, or a second?
I have a motion and a second to approve the entrance in Washington section thirty-three, one hundred and sixteen street as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay. She carried.
Okay, next item is the, I guess, I, again, I've only done this maybe once or twice with, with Jackson County, but, so we went through the interview process. We selected the applicant we want to offer the position to. He's gone through all the pre-employment testing. That's all in place and approved. So now we just need a motion to, whatever you guys do, put him on payroll, however you guys do that, yeah.
Uh, we need a motion to approve candidate A per se pending. No?
There's no pending. He, he, it's already, I don't, I get, we don't, I can bring something to you until he's passed all of those testing. So he's, he's good to go. So there's no pending. And I appreciate your response to that email that we received about the hiring process. So, did I copy you guys on that?
Somebody did.
Somebody did.
Because we got the same email.
Okay, yeah.
So just to, I think she forwarded, so that not a bus one responded because we did a nice job.
That's just the truth, so.
Yeah, and that was very, very.
So, what is our, uh, process here? We are approving the hiring?
Hiring.
Make, make a motion to approve the hiring of candidate A.
If it's his name, I mean, I'll just say Brent Wilms is a candidate, okay?
Make a motion to approve Brent Wilms as shop operator?
Maintainer operator.
You got it.
Tomorrow. I don't know, everybody's still talking.
I have motion and a second to approve the hiring of, uh, Brent Wilms as a motor maintainer operator.
There you go.
I don't know, but why didn't you guys send me the memo to wear purple?
That's kind of purglish. You got three different shades, Dirk. Can you have it light?
And Mary is too. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay. Motion carried.
Okay, and then the last item here is your dust control permit is approved by resolution each year. We made one edit to it, basically, and that was in the second paragraph. Uh, it used to say prior to application, the county will need a preparation notice. So they used to say forty-eight hours, we changed it to one week, because forty-eight hours is not enough time, especially if that forty-eight hours, it rains for two days, so you don't have time to do anything, so. That's the change.
I mean, to get her fixed up before they put the dust control on, so we don't touch it for four months or something, is that correct?
That's correct.
You do have the right if something goes on.
Yeah, if it, if it's, you know, if there's a washout or a huge storm or something, we have the right to go and fix it. So move.
I will second that.
I have motion and a second to approve resolution number four fifty-one dash zero four dash zero four dash twenty-two-three. Uh, for dust control as presented, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed nay? Motion carried.
Okay, uh, this real quick here, uh, just, are you gonna, man, there is a change? Are you gonna try to blast that out somewhere so people know that it ain't gonna be forty-eight hours anymore? It's gonna be a week? I, I'll have to look at your permit, but it's, I think, I believe it's sitting right on the permit. But I'll, I'll double check that, just make sure we make that note as they collect, as they apply for the permit or whatever, just so that is, when they grab the permit, I'll make sure Stacy, whoever, just reassure, or re, reinforces that, right, information, right?
When was the last time you were on the Just Talk? Or radio program? It's a local radio program, Just Talk.
I don't think I've ever been on that. Oh, oh.
Guess we can go every four weeks.
Four months, I think. We're thinking maybe you should go in just.
Rotation, talk about your business here.
My business.
What goes on in the county?
Secondary roads, uh.
Get my TV every week.
I got a lot of other stuff.
Is it?
He's like, I gotta look at your job.
We understand.
Uh, so just on general discussion here, uh, we are having our, uh, safety meeting today. That's where I was this morning, so I'm kind of running a little, uh, quick to get over here and meet with you guys, but, uh, that, I went over a few things with everybody. Uh, we're, I talked a little bit about the retrieval and contract rocking program, but most of, you know, we're gonna, I'm gonna meet again with the, the, uh, maintainer guys out of Macau, so we'll have a more in-depth meeting just with the people that are gonna be affected first. And then, as we go with, to each new district, we'll meet with those guys individually, so, uh, we won't just, you know, throw them out there to their own devices, so they'll have some, some training and that kind of, uh, help, uh, from the start, so.
So we're gonna start with, let's talk over the district, and, hey, can you briefly tell me what road it is? I can look it back up online.
Uh, well, I know we're doing.
Thirty.
Thirteenth.
Thirteen Street.
Dark Hollow.
Dark Hollow Road and a.
God, yeah, right next, Conchus and Dark Hollow, like, parallel each other, yeah, so, uh,
In the segment of seventeen.
We actually went out to Dark Hollow Road last week with the press, and, uh, and, you know, that road really is not in too bad a shape. It's not gonna take a lot of effort to retrieve the shoulders and holding rocks, so.
Um, it'll be a good one to start on to get the feel forward, and I will tell you this, I've had sober calls in the past week bending your department on the, uh, the roads, and how they come back to Lake here.
So, weather, weather plays a big role.
We don't get that. I get it, but we don't get them a lot, but they were, they were impressed the way the roads looked and the way they shaped them up and got it back then.
Part of the reason they got so bad is the fact that frost came out right with the rain.
It was like a perfect storm.
Perfect storm of, uh.
Three times.
Yeah. Uh, and then tomorrow night, uh, I'll be meeting with the Farm Bureau people at eight o'clock. And basically, I think I'm gonna kind of, I have a couple of questions. That's what I emailed you about. They had specific questions about funding, and then I'll probably just redo what I had presented to you guys at the five-year program. Just about the program, what's gonna be happening this next coming year for projects, and then talk about the road retrieval, contract rocking program, and that's basically it, and then, you know, open it up for whatever questions I have and that kind of things.
We are always invited to them, although would you like to back us?
No, that's up to you guys. If you wanna come here and ladder all.
Because they had called and asked.
Hey, that's kind of late, though. It's gonna be.
That's what I tell them all the time, you know, they're like, they think they got the tour, so every clock.
That's corporate, yeah.
Most of them don't eat supper till nine.
Yeah.
Uh, I think that's it. Let's guys have a meal, so.
Well, I appreciate it. Yeah, like I said, I've had some good calls once, um, so, and, you know, I guess pass it on to your employees that they're getting noticed anyway.
Okay, I would also reiterate, as we get into this research or retrieval and rocking, you're gonna, will probably get complaints about that process, so just have.
Have some patience.
Yeah, so.
Have some patience, that's all we.
What I've been spreading.
Yeah, so, okay, and then, uh, I'm gonna check with Conquest Two and see, uh, when we get our rollers, because I wanna have all that stuff in the yard, ready to go. I'll meet with the people, and when we get all the pieces in place, we're gonna go and, we're gonna put the pedal down and try and get as much as we can, so.
Appreciate that. Yeah.
So, all right, thanks.
You bet. The weather cooperates. Yeah, thanks, Todd, have a good one. Okay, are there any visitors or citizens present? Or online here that would like to speak or address the board? See, or hearing none? Um, Becky, Luann, would you? Or Lisa, like to do your portions?
We have quite a position available, but you. I won't take long.
Okay. That'd be great. Good morning.
Good morning. No sunshine this morning.
No, we'll be here Wednesday, Thursday. Yeah, I mean, we guess we, most of us have all heard the, the weather forecast, so everybody beware and be diligent about taking safety and not taking precautions of, like, something you should be.
Oh, you remember it.
Well, they stand out there and take them until they gotta, it hits the door, hits them in the tail, running out of basement, I heard, so.
Well, and just, we have the same severe weather like we had last Friday. We just ask people to kind of, to that wanna go out after the storm and survey the, the, the wreckage and stuff, um, like they had in Shreveux, it really kind of impedes the response. So just keep that in mind, that, uh, we do have some unfortunate areas this afternoon due to the weather that just kind of leave a being, let them get their stuff gathered, let response happen and.
Let your responders respond because the doctors obviously drive a little slower and.
Right.
Well, and there's a safe, so these things are sporadic, and they pop up, and they're here and gone before, uh, you know, there's many homes and trailers in the river, you know, so they're, they're that quick, and so be careful, just be aware that they're really quick coming and going, and sometimes not so much moving, but anyway, be, be aware of the weather. All right?
All right. Calendar for this week. Um, this morning, after the board meeting, we have a work session with human resources on quality updates and personnel policy updates. Uh, for three o'clock this afternoon is a green space redevelopment meeting, um, here at the library or via Zoom for any of you that want to attend that. Wednesday, you going to that? I have Wednesday, April fifth, at nine AM, is an RTA meeting, um, in Dubuque or by Zoom for all of you. And at seven o'clock, uh, tomorrow night, is the Farm Bureau meeting for any that want to attend. You're talking about eight o'clock. I have seven, so I don't know. It's eight, okay. Okay. Thursday, April sixth, from five to seven PM is the retirement open house for Cheryl Clark from the Chamber. It's across the street here at the Rurie. Friday, April seventh, at eleven AM is an Isaacs update, um, called by Zoom for Mike. And our next regular meeting will be on Tuesday, April eleventh, at nine AM. And that afternoon at four o'clock, I believe there will be a, the Hookah River Watershed Executive Meeting by Zoom for Don. That, all the business I have today.
Thank you. Take a short break, unless you wanna go ahead, Lisa?
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, then you wanna go back here?
Yeah, see if we can get through this and.
Today I need a motion to approve the minutes of the March twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-three board proceedings written by Auditor Smith and authorized publication in the official newspapers.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second to approve the minutes in March twenty-eight, twenty-three board proceedings as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay. Motion carried.
Today at three o'clock is the closing for the parking lot across the street here from the courthouse. Because this is not a claims week, this is actually a payroll week. Um, I also have the supporting documentation. If you'd like to see the closing documents for that, um, purchase, I have that with me also. But knowing that we're going to close today, I think they would, probably would like a check. So today I need a motion to approve a handwritten warrant to the Schimpfeller Law Office trust account for ninety-four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and eight cents the purchase of property from Red Decker Partners LLC for a parking lot on the corner of South Second Street and West Platte Street.
So move.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to approve a handwritten warrant, Sean Caller, uh, for the amount presented for the purchase of the parking lot? Any further comments? I would like to see a full attachment at some point, if I could, and I assume that both attorneys have agreed on the bonus David, correct?
I'm gonna contact with John.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay. Motion carried.
Motion needed to accept, place on file and authorize the chair's signature on the county recorded report of fees collected for the month, uh, month of March twenty-twenty-three in an honor of forty-six thousand, one hundred and fifty-one dollars and nineteen cents.
So moved.
I will second that.
I have motion and second to approve the chair's signature on the county's recorded report fees collected for the month of March. Although the favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay. Motion carried.
Motion needed to approve the renewal of a special Class C retail alcohol license with living quarters to the Oakland Mill LLC at twenty-two zero ninety-five Highway sixty-four, Macau, effective May first, twenty-twenty-three through April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second to approve the renewal of the special Class C retail alcohol license with living quarters as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay. Motion carried.
Motion needed to approve the renewable special Class C retail alcohol license with outdoor service to the Zewingle Recreation Association at twenty-eight four sixty-one, one hundred and ninety-fourth Avenue, Zewingle, effective May first, twenty-twenty-three through April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four.
Second.
Motion second to approve the renewal of a special Class C retail alcohol license with outdoor service to Zewingle Recreation Association as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay. Motion carried.
Motion needed to approve resolution number nine fifty-two dash zero four dash zero four dash twenty-twenty-three for the second half inter-fund operating transfer for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three in the sum of six hundred and seven thousand, six hundred dollars from the Rural Basic Fund, eleven thousand, to the secondary road fund, twenty thousand, effective April fourth, twenty-twenty-three.
Okay, so just the normal. So moved.
I will second that.
Motion and second to approve the resolution as presented for the secondary road transfer. Uh, any further discussion? Normal second half transfer. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay. Motion carried.
Motion need to approve resolution number nine fifty-three dash zero four dash zero four dash twenty-twenty-three for the annual inter-fund operating transfer for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three in the sum of twenty-five thousand dollars from the General Basic Fund, oh one thousand, to the secondary road fund, twenty thousand, effective April fourth, twenty-twenty-three.
So moved.
Motion second to approve resolution number nine fifty-three zero four dash zero four dash twenty-twenty-three as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay. Motion carried.
Motion needed to approve resolution number nine fifty-four dash zero four dash zero four dash twenty-twenty-three for the inter-fund operating transfer for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three in the sum of one dollar and fifty-six cents from the mental health fund, which is the ten thousand fund, to the mental health region fund, which is the oh one, oh one, zero, effective April fourth, twenty-twenty-three. For this, well, because, you know, last year, at the end of fiscal year last year, we had all of this money moving from Jackson County to the region, and it was noticed that when all was said and done, there was, um, an outstanding balance of a dollar fifty-six in that fund, which we can't have. We can't have any money in that ten thousand fund, that mental health fund. So we contacted the state, and this is on the advice of the um, state of how to handle this a dollar fifty-six. So we're just transferring it from that mental health fund to the mental health region fund. It's just a kind of a clean.
To transfer the money than it is that.
Yeah, no, it's just, this is what the state suggested that we do, and, yeah.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Motion and second to approve resolution nine fifty-four dash zero four dash zero four dash twenty-twenty-three as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay. Motion carried.
And I have for the board.
Thank you. And we are being joined by Becky Chimpin, our Human Resource Administrator. Um, with such action on certificates of appointment.
Good morning.
Morning.
Morning. So as you know, Attorney John Keyes has appointed John Bradkey to fill this vacancy in, as the Assistant County Attorney in the County Attorney's Office. He has appointed him effective yesterday, April third, on a six-month probationary status, which requires a certificate of appointment. It's my understanding, John, you guys already had this discussion with the board, um, introduced on as well, with the appointment of the individual.
We have had the discussion. We have not been officially um, introduced.
Okay.
Okay. So is he here?
He's here. He was at the bar around yesterday, obviously, he says we're not here, but, so I'm sure that'd be pretty good.
Well, maybe you could touch base with your head back, Tom.
Yeah. Okay. Yep. Um, so I would ask for a motion to approve the probationary certificate of appointment for John Bradkey as Assistant County Attorney effective April third, twenty-twenty-three, expiring October, November, twenty-twenty-three, including authorizing the county order to issue bi-weekly paychecks based on the base salary of eighty-five thousand dollars.
So moved.
Record that.
Motion and a second to approve the cert, certificate of appointment as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay. Motion carried.
And then our Deputy Sheriff Joel Driscoll, who currently serves as our security officer, has completed his nine-month probationary period, which as well requires a permanent certificate of appointment. I would ask for a motion to approve the certificate of appointment for Joel Driscoll as Deputy Sheriff for the remainder of the sheriff's term, expiring January one, twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
Expiring twenty-five, so all of twenty-three and twenty-four, yeah.
So normally, when an elected official takes office, their deputies are appointed for their term. With new hires, they are on a nine-month, nine-month probation for the sheriff's department. So their certificate is initially issued for nine months, like John's is issued for six months. So now Key is appointed to fill the remainder of the term, if I'm right.
Okay.
So yes, for the rest of this year, twenty, until the end of twenty-four, when he's.
Well, motion and a second to, um, approve the certificate of appointment as presented for Joel Driscoll. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay. Motion carried. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And, yeah, if you see John in the halls.
I will mention it to.
Maybe send both Johns down there. John and John?
John and John.
JJ.
JJ.
We gotta wait till ten o'clock for your work session?
You want this back right now?
What'd you say?
I said, do we have to wait till ten o'clock for your work session?
Um.
If you want to sign those, I'll take them. Otherwise. There's tons of them.
How many do we have? Is there a front back or no?
I just use, I just, there.
Is there any other boards or commissions that, uh, we wanna report on?
The, um, JCA had their, uh, John Perry on the thirtieth, and they had a great turnout, especially the students. They said they had about the same number of students as they had last year, but these students, um, a fair amount of them weren't just there killing twenty minutes. They were actually asking questions, and the employers were really excited that maybe it would. Killing twenty minutes, they were actually asking questions, and the employers were really excited that maybe it would look more into prospects. These kids, so that was, that was, they said that was something that was different, um, there was a lot more engagement with the students and the employers. So they were pretty pleased with that.
That's, that's good, I, I kind of missed that a little bit, but, you know, it's interesting, and, and of course, it, it, if you look at, I've been reading stuff, but you can tell that these. Young kids are more interested in trades and are, you know, and, uh, with, with society and the job. Situation like it is, there are well-paid jobs out there for these trade businesses, so, yeah, I appreciate, uh, appreciate what they did there and all they did, and I'm glad they had a good turnout, so. I. Don't know if I have any other reports in it. It was, and that was nice. Um, did have some repairs up to Andrew Jackson Care, um, one was a, on a. Air handler in the attic, and one was on the generator. Out, uh, the battery, battery coast cables were bad on that, so. Just general maintenance stuff, so. Yeah.
On the jail. Did we just get periodic updates from John when he sees fit, or are they like a scheduled? Every two weeks, every three weeks, every month, he comes in and. I'm a little nervous to ask, because every time we've seen like, so far this year, every time he showed up, it delayed it at least a month, but. Now that we actually have walls in progress, you know, um.
So I would guess, I don't know, Lisa, how much you know more about that than I do, you have conversations with John regularly, I was supposed, but, uh. I guess we probably have to talk to Jeremy or John and get him in here if we want him in here, I hope. Uh, I see that the crane was kind of packed up this morning, so I don't know if the walls are.
I stopped the other day and talked to Jeremy, just, uh, who, on, well, it was last Friday when the storm was coming, I was just stopping to see. If they needed to do anything extra to kind of bat in the hatches, and he said, right now they're welding the joints between, um. The, the walls that are up and somewhat waiting on American Steel, which is gonna start putting roof choices or trests in then, um.
No, I, I guess apparently the administrative area is panels and whatnot go up last late, I, I guess that up on the process, that looks like just the. Just the panels for the jail portion is, looks like it's set up, but, uh.
I was just asking how the progress goes, because, you know, you know, the crane was wrapped up, it was kind of a glorious day before the wind came and. And, uh, he said that they were waiting on those, uh, the American, I think it was American Steel, to come in and start putting the, the rafters, the, the tresses in. And he started talking about other jails that are actually on hold because they don't have the support rods that are holding our walls up. And so they can't start their jail, I forget, I forget where else that was, is because they don't have those.
Wait for the panels and you wait for the rods.
So we have, do we have our, uh? So, uh, um, we're fortunate on that, because I was like, you know, we talked a little bit about, you know, the walls were initially gonna be here the end of January. That was the end of February, now we're at the end of, you know, March, before they start showing up. I said, yeah, there, there's just a lot of those issues, and then he started talking about supports being the big, um, big problem for some projects elsewhere.
I can't imagine the mind-boggling, uh, the, the preparation and the. Organization of the whole process, you know, between this and that, plumbing, electric, spectacle, yeah, bad enough to build a doghouse, but. There's a lot of stuff involved there, you know, security and.
I just didn't know if there was like a schedule of once a month or.
I don't think we have ever set a schedule for him, I, you know, we all have his number, of course, so if you feel that you needed him or Jeremy to come in, I would certainly.
Well, at some point, I think maybe once a month, because, you know, if I get questions from the public, the votes have kind of taken a secondary tube. At least we're getting walls to, to jail, and so I think the, the best way to get the information out to the public means if we have somebody. Um, willing to write about it is, uh, kind of come in and kind of give us status updates, to let us know where, where we're at.
So I could make that contact, if, if you want me to, if you want to talk to John, it doesn't matter, we, we would like a, you know, biweekly, be it him or Jeremy, would be okay, but not.
Just so we know where we're at and how things are proceeding, because again, you know, I wouldn't know about the Raptor situation if I didn't stop, and, you know, we wouldn't know about it. Um, it would be good to kind of keep, are we, are we still on, they gave us that big schedule where they said we should be done by Christmas, well, that's. Said we were gonna get the walls the end of February, so I'm like, are we still scheduled to be done the end of Christmas, or? And he was like, well, they're hoping for, but it just really, you know, I'd like to be a little bit more informed, so we know what's going on, if that's okay.
Sure, your contact or me? Okay. I'll call down, we'll arrange meetings. All right, any other business, uh, Jess? Would you like to come forward?
I need to call us and ask me to introduce.
Well, I, I have heard that we have a new employee, I guess I'd like to meet him, I guess, that's it.
This is the Assistant John Bradkey.
Well, good morning, John, and welcome aboard, and, and nice to meet you, and.
Nice to be.
Hope you, uh. Have a good experience with your.
I appreciate it.
Staff, but.
Welcome aboard, yeah.
You wanna give us a bio or your?
I guess where you'd like me to start from. Just a brief. All right, well, uh, essentially, I've been in Dubuque County since I was nine, I went to school up in Piast, well, Piast, that fourth area. Went to undergrad in, at Lawrence, up in Dubuque. And then I went out to law school out in Michigan, Koli Law School out there. In Grand Rapids, uh, the last ten years I've been employed as a self, self-employed attorney on my own sole practitioner firm. Mainly working in criminal defense work.
Okay.
Well, good. Should fit right in with us, welcome aboard and. Been getting along with the staff, you probably.
Doing a great job.
I appreciate it, and we welcome you, and, uh, if you need anything, let us know.
That's okay, thank you.
All right, thanks, Jeff.
Thanks.
Thanks, Jess. Any other business before the board this morning? Have a motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay, motion carries.